Eleven to twenty-five. Thing on Dennis Criss. Multiple transfers, see below.
That's unusual for me to have this. I guess I'm on the agenda first. Well, if you want me to go through them one by one, the flock cameras, the prosecutor's office and I are splitting that. So we're transferring the money from there. I brought my matron in case you guys have any more questions. When you get reimbursement companies, as I mentioned earlier in session, it goes to the county, to the auditor. We have to ask for a transfer rather than come directly to us. That's number two. And the drone, which was eight months ago, just got reimbursed or sent to the county about six weeks ago, so we have to ask for that back.
One minute.
Exactly, yeah. At that much time, to be honest with you, I said we'll pay for it ourselves. The deputy overtime, I already discussed that in length. No, you're good. I think. The part-time jailers, that speaks for herself. Carrie was able to do a lot of work on this. Because there's other sheriffs who tell you, hey, you asked for an additional, spend a lot of time trying to find the transfers. Thousand for the equipment, visual auto goes to medical service. But happened, I'll let her. I don't want. They took, they gave us a credit for part of it, took some away, so it's actually costing us money.
That covers the patient and everything, yeah. What are, what are the flock?
That's the license plate reader cameras.
Oh, okay.
I don't want to say we're any of those cars, obviously.
Oh, yeah.
The prosecutor's off, yeah, the prosecutor's office splits that cost with us. So what happens is she pays county and then we got to ask for that money. It is what it is. It's not really an additional.
On that, uh, what you couldn't hear say, it was thirteen thousand dollars. They're taking it from equipment and visual audio to medical service because the jail, they have a contract and they used to pay for everything and now they don't pay for everything. The medical company does because you have to provide, I'm not saying this right, but I think you have to provide medical service to, you know, all the inmates. And that's what the thirteen thousand, but they're not asking for an additional, they're asking for a transfer.
Yeah, quality corrections lowered their price on one thing, but then made us pay for, for prescriptions, so it actually ends up costing us more money. Give you credit, end up taking more away. A lot of sheriff's departments are complaining about that. It is what it is.
Maybe you'll find a new company at the next sheriff's convention.
We've, we've served.
I know.
We're one of the most feasible companies, they're ours.
Yeah.
I guess. It's coming from our budget.
From county general, yes.
I want. About a month ago, I said, hey, if you can try and try and transfer an additional. She was able to scratch it, looked through our budget and she found all this. It's, it's already in our budget.
Were you able to find any part-time help?
Part-time help, we have people part-time now, but they're policemen out of the place.
Yeah, well, I think, didn't we, didn't we give you?
They did, but, you know, if I need them in a pinch, I can call. I mean, if I'm in a bind, they will have you some of it.
I'd make a motion to approve.
I'll second that motion.
I got a motion to second to approve the transfers for the sheriff's department as presented. Is there any discussion? No discussion, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carried. Thank you, thank you.
Thank you.
Excuse me here, just a second, Carrie, Sheriff. I do want to say one thing, I, I want to commend you guys, thank you, because earlier today I had a, a person request some information and I didn't have the answer at the time. So I called the sheriff and Carrie happened to be right close to him. And they got me the answers to my questions in a very reasonable time. I was able to call the person back, give them an answer, so they were aware of what, uh, what the correct answer was, what they were seeing, and I want to thank you guys for that. I know we get that same thing from all the workers of the Placeta County local government.
Appreciate that, Ken, we're, we're public office.
I just had this opportunity to say it, I want to make sure I said it.
On in.
Always have been, always have been. Thank you.
Edwina, you're next.
I'm here to ask inappropriate money in eleven fifty-nine. Some of the unappropriated. I'd like to see this thousand dollars into time nurse. Five thousand dollars in miscellaneous services. I'd like to put ten thousand dollars in miscellaneous supply.
Art, this needs to be advertised, correct? Is this money you have to, uh, just not appropriated yet from the state grant you get? Not from the grant?
It's just from the health department at eleven fifty-nine. Money that we bring in, you know, like for permit fees.
Okay.
You know.
I didn't know what eleven fifty-nine was.
When, uh, when you say that you want to use it for like, uh, some of the help and stuff, is that because we're short on salaries? Or is that because, uh, I guess, I guess I'm just asking, for these places that you, that you want to move the money for, what? What is the reason for needing to put them in places?
We need, we want to move this money so we can spend it.
Right, yeah.
It's been allocated. And we have not, um, asked the county to fund the full time nurse. Okay, because we have, um, eleven sixty-one, which is the grant of the state.
Right.
However, that money is seventy-three percent less next year. So we need to get some money moved, so we have money.
Yeah, I guess that was the point that I was trying to make was the fact of, I know that, uh, you guys are, went from twenty-five thousand to twenty thousand and so there's a difference. So now there's extra funds needed to cover costs that are, that are at the level.
Extra.
This is, this is. The SB, this eleven sixty-one money was applied seventy-three percent for next year. Okay? So right now we're paying the full time nurse out of the grant with the eleven sixty-one. Next year we want to continue doing that. We don't want the county to pay for that position. So we need to have money to pay for that position.
But not for, for next year.
Right, that'll go on your budget. That'll go, that'll.
You'll do it at the budget hearing rather than here. Because it sounds like you're wanting additional.
He is. He's wanting to spend this money this year.
Why, does it go away, the money go away? It will, they take it back if you don't spend it?
This is our money. Nine is that we made in our department. Okay? And doesn't go away. But.
But then why are we, why don't we budget the money instead of do an additional? Because it always looks bad when you do additionals. If we would budget it tomorrow, it, it would be fine.
But she wants to spend it this year.
No, she just said next year.
And it's, like, I guess we don't want to spend the fifteen thousand dollars for the nurse this year. But when it comes budget time, you guys are going to see that there's no money appropriated for our nurse.
This is a tomorrow problem.
I think it's a tomorrow problem too, because you tell us tomorrow, we're going to listen. I mean, well, if you have that in there, money you get in, you're, you obviously have twenty-five thousand dollars, right? That you want us to pop out of that. So tomorrow, we'll take that twenty-five thousand dollars. You're not going to spend it this year, we, you don't want to appropriate it this year.
I just, uh, money for miscellaneous services. Because we don't have that money in our eleven sixty-one.
That'd be fine, but I don't know if you'd really want the fifteen thousand. Rather budget that.
I just.
But is it, is it even an additional or is it a transfer?
No, it's an additional. Because it's just sitting in the fund, it's not been appropriated, have to be an additional. If she's wanting to spend it this.
But what was the other, you said it so fast, you had fifteen for the nurse, five thousand for supplies, and I didn't get what.
Miscellaneous.
Ten thousand, five, what was the five thousand?
Five thousand, miscellaneous. You know, like if we buy, uh, supplies for events.
There, there isn't any other line item that you could transfer, just Chris did. Budget.
Well, I, I guess that's, I guess, because now I, I guess I even got a little confused because, and that's what I, what I was trying to ask before is, is there, for like the miscellaneous supplies and miscellaneous services, because I agree with, with Mike and that on the, on the, on the, uh, uh, payroll for the nurse, but like the ten thousand for miscellaneous supplies and the five thousand for services, is there something that you guys are looking to buy with that right now? Or is it just to have it there for what you might want to buy?
And that's in your Senate Bill Two Fund? That fif, that fifteen thousand dollars is in that Senate Bill Two Fund that's getting flashed?
No, it's eleven fifty-nine, which is their normal.
That's the permit where they collect their money?
Yes.
I, I think we should know where it is until you spend it. You don't have something that you want to spend it on and it doesn't go away, it doesn't really make sense.
But you just said you didn't have anything you was going to buy anyway. You don't, you don't have anything you're going to buy anyway, right?
I mean, you know, like if there's, you know, and that's why, uh, last, last night it was in our area. And maybe the tip needs additional.
As a department head from prior, if something come up, I would come in. Otherwise, I wouldn't go. Got to have a reason.
I think it's a budget thing tomorrow. I really do. I mean, I don't know what the rest of the board's thinking, but it sounds like a budget tomorrow. Not that we're not against it or something, but it's just like it's a budget. Have the number tomorrow. None of it.
That money. Money that we have in that. No, it doesn't.
No.
No, this one does not. It stays in that eleven fifty-nine. Yes, that's why there's so much in there, because it's money that she never, so, you know, you budgeted so much money for her to use and maybe she didn't use all of it. So then it rolls back into that balance. Well, yeah.
Yeah, I, I, I think, yeah, if we don't have something, and I know it holds you off another month or whatever, but if we don't have something that we need to spend it on, we can look at that at budget time, at tomorrow and look at how much is in that fund and, you know, because like now, is there only fifteen thousand in the whole fund? Or is there more than that? Or, you know, but when we look at that fund, then we'll, we'll be able to have a, a better plan maybe of how we want to, want to move it.
Thank you.
Thank you. We'll see you tomorrow. Wednesday. Susan Overton. Yeah, can't wait. Yeah.
Hello? Better? Okay, let me tell you, uh, this is just some of the things I've learned. I did not realize until I be, went on the Francisville Town Board about how the funding for the fire department was. I just, you know, I just realized it was always there. Even growing up in Georgia, I don't know if anybody knows where Georgetown is, but my family always helped with the volunteer fire department. But in our, our county, we have approximately one thousand sixty runs a year, or last year. Uh, twenty to forty percent of those are fires and the rest are medical or accidents. We have, uh, for our fire department, we have the turnout gear, which is what the, the, they wear into the fires. It costs four thousand dollars per person and the pack with the oxygen is ten thousand dollars. So for each firefighter, we have fourteen thousand dollars that we have to have. The trucks range anywhere from a hundred and twenty thousand to seven hundred and fifty thousand and above. So if you think about that, there is a lot of expense there. And I looked and since twenty, at least since twenty thirteen, there has been no increase in the funding for our volunteer fire department. And I think about this and these guys, every time there's a call, no matter what it is, they don't know what it's going to be, they come out and they risk their lives for very little compensation. I know in Francisville, they get seven dollars every time they show up. Now, that's not a lot to risk your life, seven dollars. So we need to be giving them the best equipment we can and we need to be funding them. It's, so it's what, twelve years, we've not given them anything, any increase at all. And I would like to see, what I would like to see is double it. I know that's probably not realistic right now, but I think that, you know, for twelve years, if you'd done the increase gradually, which I'm not going to say. We have, we have been in lots of situations where if we'd done something gradually, we wouldn't have to cause so much of it. So if we double it now, you, we wouldn't have to worry about it. But anyway. The other thing I want to remind you is that these guys are always on call. No, they're always there, ready to go whenever there's a fire. And, but that's, that's my thinking and that's what I wanted to present to you. And I don't know if you have any questions, but if you do, I'm not a really good expert. But I will answer to the best of my ability.
We have our budgets tomorrow.
Oh, do you?
Yeah, I'm sure it'll be on the commissioner's budget, because that's where it's at.
Okay.
It's in the commissioner's budget. I'm sure it is.
Okay. You know what the increase is, or can I even ask? Okay.
My email hasn't worked because the rowing company decides to shut our emails off on Friday. All of our emails that, all the information on it, previous week ago. So I didn't print them, there's sixty pages. I was looking at them on there and happened. Print them. Whatever, five hundred dollars tomorrow for paper. Paper for us. Anyway, that's another subject.
Okay, all right.
So we'll definitely look at it tomorrow.
Okay, great.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, thank you, Suzy.
Now we're down to advertise additional, number four. We can have a motion or discussion or both, or, anybody got any discussion first?
This is all the stuff we already did.
These are the additionals from last meeting last month. Um, these are just because they've been advertised now, requirements. Um, this is where further approve them.
All right, I'll, I'll make a motion to go ahead and approve the additionals that have been advertised as presented.
Got a motion and a second, is there any discussion? No discussion? Have the, as presented, these four things, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Aye. Any opposed? Motion carried. Then, next, number five, discussion of the twenty-six, twenty-six budget. I think we can do that tomorrow, how about you guys?
Thanks.
Are okay on that?
Yeah.
Okay, council paste update. That was, uh, I don't know, I'm always at a meeting at the thing somewhere. I talked to Jenny Shank, she was, uh, I guess I don't tell her personal business, but anyway, she's in the downstairs of the annex. Oh, I took in my, get paid and they, they won't write you a check anymore, so they give it to you in a direct deposit. Well, anyway, long story short, I had to go see her about that. She goes, why are you getting paid twice a year? And I said, I don't know. She goes, you need to get paid regular payroll, you make ten thousand dollars a year, you get four hundred dollars every paper. I said, okay, I'll bring it up at the meeting. I'm bringing it up at the meeting.
You don't make ten thousand.
You might, but the rest of us don't. I'm just rounding up, if it's more than five thousand, five hundred dollars, I'm going to pay it.
So what, what's it going to entail? Do you have, do we have to pay to have payroll processed every two weeks?
No, Jenny, uh, we do not use a payroll processing company. We use, um, this new timekeeping system, AOD, which we're working on getting everybody, uh, acclimated to. But, um, there's going to be a little bit of legwork, um, doing it every two weeks versus twice a year. Once she gets it loaded, then it's kind of a flip, flip of the switch, just like whenever, you know, because council or commissioner used to be twice a year as well. And, um, several of the other, uh, different departments, there was some that were the same way. So, um, but yes, Jenny, it's not an increased amount as far as Jenny's wages, um, hours, anything like that. We'll take a little bit of a.
So there's, there's one other thing though. With twice a year, who pays? There's some years, twenty-seven pays it. I remember that from when I was payroll.
So now we only divide between twenty-six pays because we pay, so, um, I brought that up to Jenny because several of the other counties were talking about next year being a twenty-seven pay year. But they, according to what we've done in the past, we've always paid, so like, we used to pay years and years ago, probably twenty years ago, we used to, the elected officials got a last pay at the end of the year because it cleaned out the appropriation. Um, and they've stopped doing that, so what they do is they take our pay, such as council, you know, they would take it and divide it by the twenty-six to get the amount for the year. Same way that they do with mine or any of the others. And then they figure it per hour as well because of the matrix. They do every two weeks.
Twenty-six thousand.
I'd make a motion to let Jenny pay us every two weeks if it makes her job easier.
Second.
I'll second it.
Is there any discussion? No discussion, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Nay.
That's a nay. Nays. Any other board business? Oh, yeah. We got to pay the fool and caterpillar. I got emailed out the resolution twenty-five dash twelve.
Oh.
This one I printed myself. Different. I read it. Nathan? Help us with this on how State Board of Accounts told us we had to have this to get it, uh.
Yes, uh, council, you have two versions in your packet. The first one, the one marked A in the top right corner, is the one that Mike has up for consideration. Um, yeah, uh, you had made, passed your, just voted at a previous meeting to make that first one-time allocation out of the, uh, revenue from the solar economic development agreements. And it came to the auditor's attention that State Board was going to require some additional paperwork, pertaining to how you could spend it, what you could spend it on, rules for spending it, uh, before you do that. And so what you have in front of you is a resolution that basically says it's the council's job to allocate revenues that come into the county's treasury. Council wants to use these, it's very broadly worded, support infrastructure, workforce development, public services, incentives, any other project program or initiative that you deem to contribute to the economic development of the county or the well-being of its residents. That you can either support them through direct county cutting of checks through the auditor's office or can provide funding to a qualifying municipal or nonprofit partner, depending on what the specific circumstances are. That particularly in the case with the nonprofit partner that is providing good services or other benefits to the community, there may be appropriate documentation required, potentially including an actual contract, highlighting what services they are providing for the community on the county's behalf. And it also gives the county treasurer on the okay of the council and the board of finance to invest some of the revenue, whether in a CD, other investment tools, or an endowed fund at the community foundation. Says that you have the right to amend or replace this resolution as circumstances may dictate and to adopt further rules and procedures to guide you in the long-term expenditure of these revenues. And that's it.
Thank you.
The only problem I got with it is payroll included. In the long term, you might not have funds, payroll needs fixed with the general budget, not, not relying on solar or wind or anything else.
I don't think anybody is saying that because it's a permissible use, that's the plan. It just gives you complete flexibility. I mean, in particular, right now, we have been paying some of our sheriff's office wages with ARP funds and even if only short-term as a stopgap, until we see the impact of SEA one on our finances, once that money is gone, like the council may need to. Or, uh, the council may see fit at some time, the county may see fit to hire somebody as a short-term project manager for some. In, instead of my having led, taken point on the courthouse project, the county had done something like that and it's not somebody who's on payroll, it's a contract or something, or short-term, things like that. I don't think anything in here should be construed as requiring the council ever to touch these funds for payroll. I think you're just better off with being more flexible than less, particularly when we have questions around the ARP money disappearing and SE one, SEA one completely wreaking havoc on our finances going forward.
Yeah, I think we need to understand that just because this resolution here gives the council the ability to allocate, use some of that money or anything to be spent, it still has to be brought in front of the board, a motion has to be made and there has to be a vote on. Not, it's not a resolution saying, you know, somebody can just start spending it, it still has to, has to have a motion, has to have discussion and a vote made and passed by the board to be able to spend any of that fund.
Phil, is anybody going to make a motion to pass this?
I'll make a motion to adopt the resolution twenty-five dash twelve.
Got a motion and a second to adopt twenty-twenty-five dash twelve. Uh, any discussion? No discussion, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? All those opposed? Yes, one, no? Motion carried. Thing on the agenda is out of where? Public comment? Any public comment?
Hi, can you hear me okay? So, good evening, council members and fellow communities. It's no surprise that Plaski County is at a pivotal point in history. Decisions being made today about development, infrastructure, and public resources shape not only, sorry, will shape not only how we grow and serve, but how we preserve what makes Plaski County special. Something that you're just talking about this evening. Earlier this year, the Plaski County Strategic Visioning Center, centered right here in this room, led by the Indiana Communities Institute at Ball State and commissioned by the Community Foundation. It is noted that Plaski County wants stronger transparency, clearer communication, and more opportunities to work together before decisions are made. In response to that need, on August fourth, the Board of Commissioners agreed to, on public record, to host a quarterly Plaski County Town Hall. The first is scheduled for Saturday, September sixth, at ten thirty AM at the Celebration Station in Winemac. This will be a space for two-way dialogue, a chance for residents to ask questions, share perspectives, and hear directly from your local leaders. It is, the setting is designed for connection rather than formal motions, though it is different than what we are experiencing here this evening. I'm here tonight to personally invite and encourage each of you to attend. Your presence sends a powerful signal that the council, alongside our commissioners, values transparency and that you want to hear directly from the people you serve. Town halls happen in counties all across the country because they work. They give residents a chance to be heard, and leaders a chance to share information that directly, share information directly, and communities a chance to build trust. On September sixth, you have the opportunity to be a part of that process here in Plaski County. I look forward to seeing you there. Our community will remember who stands behind this opportunity. Thank you.
Any other public comment?
Meeting or two back said something about Bankers, ex-lawyer, had received two hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars. Has anybody looked into where that money went or what it was for? Was it service from the solar company? Curious if anybody's looked into.
Well, this isn't, we're not talking back and forth on this, that was brought up by, I don't, I don't know if there's any truth to that or anything.
I don't know.
Exactly. Never heard a thing about it.
Any other public comment?
Crystal Coker, Judge Spreerport, um, there were some questions. Budget, most of you will hear these things, but commissioners may not, um, and the public may not. But, um, when we're talking about our navigator, I don't have any idea what Foresty is doing. Like we did with the hospital. But currently, our navigator is in place, and she has provided A and B, budget, sorrow. Um, she has served in twenty-five so far. So I think they talked about and uh, and also talking about the expense of in twenty-twenty-two, uh, our recidivism rate was fifty-eight point five percent. We are now, um, at twenty-twenty-four, after completing the calculations, have dropped five percent. Which doesn't sound like a lot, but it's true. Uh, in addition to that, uh, I know that our jail members are going down. And a year ago, August eleventh of twenty-four, we had ninety-one individuals in jail, and today, I saw seventy-five in jail. That includes our federal prisons. So, talking about just um, not only are we talking about additional bots to create more talking about about thirty-five dollars a day saving, uh, county. So if you look at over a year, about thirty thousand dollars. So all of that is coming. I know there's a lot of people that got brought up in the
Okay, thank you. Any more public comment?
Was asking about as far as the money that was to be paid to the county. Um, according to the Economic Development Agreement from Mammoth Solar and Moss Creek, Mammoth was to pay the county. The county, a hundred and twenty thousand dollars for the creation of the agreements. Those were the decommissioning, drainage, road use. Uh, Moss Creek was to pay the county a hundred and five thousand dollars. The county never received the money. And it is in that agreement, so you all have an obligation, this county council, to track down or to get documentation of where two hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars owed to the county went. Uh, and we understand that it was received during a meeting. It was, it was stated, um, by Kevin Tankersley, our then attorney, that, that the, um, that they did, the providers did receive the money, but we don't know where that money went. Did it all go to Kevin Tankersley? Did Kevin pay the other, uh, providers the money that they were owed? Did Kevin Tankersley keep all two hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars? And where are the invoices for the work that he did on all of those, um, agreements? So right now, that money is just gone. I mean, I'm not sure if he should have received all of that. Uh, if there are invoices for the work that he did on those. But I would hope as a county council responsible for the money in Plaski County, that you guys would be seeking this out. So if you did not, if you have not heard about this prior to tonight, as a commissioner, I am asking our county council to provide the documentation and the evidence for where that money went. And if you need the Economic Development Agreement, I'm happy to supply that to you. Uh, it was written by Kevin Tankersley and maybe another attorney, Mammoth or Moss Creek. Uh, but they did write that agreement, and in the agreement, it does say the county should receive that money. So we have two hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars the county's never received. And I would hope that you're all not okay with two hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars having disappeared because it should have gone through the county books, correct, Teresa?
Did not.
So as president and vice, I'm asking you to look into that and to provide the county and commissioners with the documentation to show where that money is.
Who signed the, uh, the U D O?
It's not the U D O, it's the Economic Development Agreement.
Who signed that?
Uh, that would have been probably the commissioners from last time. I'm assuming I would have to pull that out.
You have it with you?
I can look and see if I do. I don't, I don't know that I do. You can get online. It's under, if you go to the Plaski County online website, that Economic Development Agreement is on there, and read it for yourself, and it states it.
Thank you.
If you would have an answer for us at your next commissioners' meet, or next county council meeting, I would greatly appreciate that, and I think the public would as well.
Thank you. Any other public comment? Nathan?
Yes, I can add some additional information here. Um, Mammoth paid twenty-four thousand dollars directly to Baker Tilly for their services rendered. They paid forty-eight thousand dollars directly to Tankersley Law for their services rendered. And they paid forty thousand dollars directly to Barnes and Thornburg for their services rendered, for a total of a hundred and twelve thousand dollars.
Well, thanks. I guess we don't have to look that up. Appreciate it.
And that means that the services came in under that. The number was put in there based on the firm's expected costs, not based on the county making up a number and pulling it out of its ass. So I assume they invoice those numbers, and that's what they paid them. County wouldn't be entitled to the extra eight thousand dollars because none of the money was intended to be put into the county's treasury long term. For services rendered, and those services rendered came in cheaper. I'm not an attorney, I'm just telling you that's what they paid, and they didn't see fit to spend more than was necessary. I'm not sure, are you saying that you think Mr. Tankersley should have got another eight thousand dollars? Baker Tilly should have, Barnes and Thornburg should have? That's not my question, though. I'm asking yes, and none of the parties who were paid seem to have been upset by the amounts that they received because it equated to what the services they provided were valued at.
Okay, thank you. Any other public discussion, comment? Please come to state your name, address, and everything. You got three minutes.
Connie Erlich, two seventeen West one hundred and fourth, Winemac. Um, I guess my other question to Nathan, I assume that you're talking about Mammoth Solar payment?
Yes.
Do you have the Moss Creek payment information?
I do not.
Do not?
At the time, Commissioner Knebel only asked me to look into the Mammoth totals.
Okay, I think she was asking tonight if we could look into the Moss Creek as well. There's a hundred and five thousand that was supposed to go to the county as well.
Yes, I know where.
Thank you. Any other public comment? Public comment? Any further board business? No further board business. Well, adjourn the meeting.
Mike, do you have a